Good evening, councilors. And good evening, guests. We will begin our meeting tonight, August 8th, 2022, with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a former worship leader of my hometown's Presbyterian church, I'd be humbled and privileged to personally offer this evening's opening prayer in expression of gratitude. So I invite everyone to please feel free to bow your head, close your eyes, and fold your hands as you see fit. We express gratitude to the grandness of existence for this moment. Of all of the infinite possibilities within this infinite universe, out of the billions of souls in our little corner of that universe, we find ourselves here, together, and gifted with the incredible opportunity and privilege to have an effect that will surely outlive us all. The Creator, the Universe, the Absolute, has blessed this body with the power to have immeasurable impact for generations to come. And by acknowledging this solemn duty, we accept the responsibility to do right by our community whom we lived amongst in these most significant, if not fleeting, of times. As we enter the annual season during which we decide where each precious cent given to us by our neighbors is going to go, let us feel the freedom to focus and deliver on the needs of our people and not fall to the cynicism of the rhetorical. May we not lead by a fear of punishment nor by a promise of exaltation, but rather may we lead our beautiful city so that we can presently and continuously uphold the fundamental principles of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness that are endowed by our Creator within every one of our neighbors and every one of us. To those who feel so inclined, would you please join me in saying amen? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. We have twenty-five councilors present. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. I will ask our council attorney, I believe she has a statement. Ms. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. For members of the public who are in attendance regarding the Dehan rezoning matter located at 1212 Castania Drive, please be advised that council rules do not permit public testimony on this matter. In other words, members of the public will not be allowed to speak on the rezone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. So we have our guest, we have a special guest today, the mayor of the city of Indianapolis, who we'll recognize in just a moment under official communications. With that, the next item on our agenda is official communications, and we are honored this evening to have with us the mayor of the city of Indianapolis, the Honorable Joseph H. Hogshead, to make his presentation of the city's proposed 2023 budget. Mr. Mayor, we look forward to working with the administration in the coming months as we craft the budget for 2023, and we'd ask you to please come forward.
Thank you. Thank you. President Osalee, Vice President Adamson, Majority Leader Lewis, Minority Leader Mallory, members of this august body, the Indianapolis Marion County City-County Council, good evening. For two and a half years, Indianapolis has shown dignity and strength as our country has struggled to withstand wave after wave after wave of heartache and grief, anxiety and fear, anger and sadness, seismic changes that have affected all of us, all of us. A year ago, I came before you at a time of enormous challenge. COVID had interrupted yet another summer. The psychological and the economic effects of the pandemic, as well as the widespread availability of guns, continued to push gun violence to new heights. That night, I outlined a historic fiscal package aimed squarely at fighting gun violence and strengthening our economy. Working with all of you, that plan was overwhelmingly adopted by this council, and we immediately got to work. And tonight, we can all come together to celebrate the bipartisan success stories being written as a result of your collective action. We've invested in living wage job creation while making unprecedented investments in affordable housing and educational attainment to secure the future of the people of Indianapolis. We've bolstered our crime prevention efforts with the hiring of dozens of violence interrupters while providing the largest infusion of grant funding to grassroots anti-violence groups in the history of our city. We've devoted more funding to hiring additional sworn police officers, as well as expanding the size of our civilian police force, while making long overdue investments in police technology that will make our community safer and improve accountability. The results? Since last year's budget passage, we saw the unemployment rate go far below pre-pandemic levels. Elanco broke ground on a new headquarters at the former GM stamping plant site. Corteva named Indianapolis as its global headquarters. IU Health is investing millions to create a new healthcare center and campus downtown. The 16 Tech Innovation District and Bottle Works Development continue to grow, and more cranes are up in the air every day with new investment in the city of Indianapolis. And as for violent crime this year, I'm encouraged to report that just seven months into our anti-violence plan, and after it went into effect, intentional homicides in our city are down nearly 20%. Aggravated assaults are down 16%. Non-fatal shootings are down 10%. As we gather tonight, Indianapolis is on pace for the first decline in gun violence since the start of the pandemic, and we're on pace for the largest decline in homicides in well over a decade. So to my partners on the City-County Council, the question for all of us tonight is simple: what's next? First, I am submitting a budget package tonight that will continue to invest in the men and the women of IMPD. It provides substantial hiring bonuses for experienced officers to join our ranks, and it dramatically raises the pay for first-year officers to one of the highest levels of any police department anywhere in the Midwest. I'm secondly submitting a budget package tonight that will provide tens of millions of dollars to cut next year's property tax bill for the vast majority, nearly 90%, of Marion County homeowners, while continuing while continuing to fund critical programs for renters like the Tenant Legal Assistance Program and the Eviction Avoidance Project. Third, I am submitting a budget package tonight that over the next five years will invest more than $1 billion into our roads, our streets, our sidewalks, and our stormwater improvements. Fourth, I'm submitting a budget package tonight that will grow our successful Indy Achieves College Completion Program, providing an additional half a million dollars in funding to help Marion County students achieve the dream of a high-quality degree or a credential. And perhaps most importantly, I'm submitting a budget package tonight that will do all of these things and more while maintaining strong reserves and ensuring that the budget you all will begin considering tonight will be balanced for the sixth consecutive year in a row. So let me begin by our top priority, investments in public safety. Last year, we introduced a $150 million three-year gun violence reduction strategy. Thanks to bipartisan support from this council, in its first year, this strategy has provided significant investments in grassroots violence reduction and new crime-fighting technology, all while boosting funding for new police officers. Since then, intentional homicides are down by nearly 20%, and many other violent crime metrics are on the decline across our city. But while the results of our anti-crime strategy have been encouraging, and while funding for IMPD is at historically high levels, I want to be clear about the challenges we face in adequately staffing our police department. As of this evening, IMPD has roughly 200 positions funded by this council that remain unfilled due to a police staffing shortage that has swept across the country, affecting law enforcement agencies, large and small. But while other cities are struggling to find resources to address this national problem, our fiscal prudence over the last six years means that we are in a position to take swift local action. That's why tonight, I'm proposing to dramatically increase the first-year police officer salaries by 16%. A newly hired officer first year will now make $61,829 a year. I'm also proposing increasing our hiring bonus for new officers to $10,000. Now, together, this proposal would result in IMPD having the highest first-year compensation package for new officers, higher than anywhere else in the state of Indiana. But just as important as staffing officers to combat violence is preventing the violence from occurring in the first place, and that means continuing to make investment in our response to mental illness and addiction. That is why tonight, I am delivering on a promise to establish the city's first emergency response team consisting entirely of mental health professionals. This group of trained healthcare providers will respond to cases in which residents face nonviolent mental health or substance abuse episodes. Thank you to Faith in Indiana and the many City-County councilors who have advocated for this investment that will allow us to better serve our residents and allow our police to return to a focus on violent crime. Last year at this meeting, I assured residents that our infrastructure, unfunded, underfunded, and neglected for decades, would receive a historic boost. With the bipartisan support of the City-County Council, we have invested more than $1 billion in our roads, bridges, and other infrastructure over the course of the last seven years. Tonight, I am submitting to this council a capital improvement plan that would invest another $1.1 billion for roads, streets, sidewalks, and stormwater improvements over the next five years. That includes $849 million in transportation spending and $309 million in stormwater improvements. That translates to major projects all around Marion County, from Country Club Road on the west side to Kentucky Avenue on the southwest side, to Bluff Road on the south side, from Post Road on the east side, and the Keystone Bridge on the north side, to Michigan Road on the northwest side. As well as residential street improvements in every single council district in the city of Indianapolis. By the way, these improvements will also make critical investments in our efforts to calm traffic, protect pedestrians and cyclists, and reduce the rise in deaths associated with antiquated street design. Just as importantly, I will continue to work with our partners across central Indiana and in the General Assembly to urge them to take action to address inequities in our state's road funding formula. I've made it clear to them that I will not support raising vehicle taxes on Marion County residents, not one dime, until we receive our fair share of what our residents are already paying in taxes each year. This year represents the sixth straight City-County budget that has been balanced, bipartisan, and impactful, all without raising a single dollar in any new taxes. Our fund balances are healthier than they have been in a generation. Credit rating agencies continue to applaud our conservative approach to fiscal management, and we're better positioned than ever to make investments, continuing investments, in our neighborhoods. But all of that is meaningless if residents can't afford to put food on the table or purchase school supplies for their children due to the effects of rising inflation in our country. Now, while the city does not control the price of consumer goods, we can ensure that the smart fiscal strategy that we have followed benefits residents at a time when they are hurting. That's why tonight, I am proposing a 2023 property tax credit for the overwhelming majority of Marion County homeowners. What that means is, for homesteads valued at less than $400,000, owners will receive at least a $100 credit toward their next property tax bill. And, Mr. President, for those who have homestead valued at less than $250,000, that credit will rise to $150 on their next tax bill. And for those who are not homeowners, this budget package continues to fund tenant legal assistance and offers critical rent relief through our IndyRent program to families most in need. To date, IndyRent has deployed more than $150 million in rental assistance since the onset of the pandemic. Over the past year, we've averaged more than $7 million in rent relief every month to help keep our neighbors housed and prevent unnecessary evictions. While these programs won't end the effects of inflation, I passionately believe that every level of government must do its part to help residents during these uncertain economic times. And finally, perhaps no investment pays bigger dividends for our city's long-term future than investment in our children's education. Especially now. The pandemic has had enormous impact on all Marion County students, from early childhood literacy to post-secondary education. We need to invest like never before to lift up those who have been impacted the most, and that's why tonight, we are proposing to expand the Indy Achieves program with a half a million dollars in additional funding. This year, this year, nearly 500 students from IUPUI and Ivy Tech are receiving completion grants from the Indy Achieves program. That means hundreds of residents across every township are using completion grants to go back to school, to earn degrees, and that will help them shape their careers and transform their lives in the next coming decades. With tonight's proposed funding increase for Indy Achieves, that impact will grow to nearly 700 students next year. And tonight, we happen to be joined by some of our Indy Achieves students. Can we ask them to stand and all of us give them a round of applause? And as important as a post-secondary degree is, nothing prepares a young student for success like early childhood literacy. That's why this evening's budget package includes $1 million to create the Circle City Readers Program. This program will utilize tutors to close reading gaps for 1,000 Marion County students in grades K through 3. That focused one-on-one support will give more children the foundation they need to excel in school and make the most of their education. This program will operate in partnership with a coalition of local stakeholders committed to our students' futures. Tonight, we do have parents, educators, and community leaders in the audience to express their support for this program. Thank you all for being here. Look, these last three years have been tough for our country, have been tough for our state, they have been tough for our city. In the midst of these historic challenges, we've worked hard to keep our eyes on what matters most: fighting gun violence, rebuilding our streets and roads, growing our local economy, and improving student achievement. For nearly three years now, despite the hard days and the long nights, we've kept our collective faith in each other, and we've never lost the belief that tomorrow will be better. Gun violence is down. Our economy is strong. Our city's budget remains fully funded and balanced without a single tax increase in seven years. Now, that's progress, but it's not enough. We must continue to build on it. So I leave you tonight by saying, let's get back to work. I thank you.
Counselors, let's take a two-minute recess and allow our visitors to leave the room. Thank you. All right. Thank you, councilors. The next item on our agenda is the continuation of official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, August 8th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Vice President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, July 29, 2022, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 242, 243, and 246, 2022. Said hearing to be held on Monday, August 8th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. in the Public Assembly Room of the City-County Building, 200 East Washington Street. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City-County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances: fiscal ordinance numbers seven and eight, general ordinance numbers 31 through 36, special ordinance number eight, special resolution numbers 32, I'm sorry, 23 and 24. Joseph H. Hogshead, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent? The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for July the 11th, 2022. Do I have consent? Now proceeded the presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. I will ask, however, that our city comptroller, Mr. Ken Clark, would come I will ask, however, that our city comptroller, Mr. Ken Clark, would come forward to provide some highlights on the proposed 2023 City-County Annual Budget. And, Mr. Clark, if you're available, I'll now present a brief overview of this proposed budget. Now, counselors, this is purely for informational purposes, and there will be no question or answer session, as comments and questions can be asked on specific areas of the budget during the various upcoming committee meetings. Mr. Clark.
You got me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to present the overall budget overview with you today. I'll be as brief as I can be. We wanted to walk you through the pieces of the budget and the operational budget, as well as the fiscal strategy we've taken over the last six years especially, to make sure that we were able to present to you a balanced budget that was fully funded. Go to the next slide for me. Thank you. We've taken a multi-year strategy from 2017 to 2022 of consistently balanced budgets. Specifically, our revenue meets or exceeds our expenses. This is the sixth budget in a row that is balanced that we're presenting to the council. We've continued to preserve fund balances wherever possible and protect the city's overall finances as much as possible. For 2023, you'll see that we've made strategic investments in public safety and infrastructure as our focus. As you go through budget hearings, you'll hear all about those different items. And we've continued to use conservative revenue estimates while underspending our expense budgets to be able to continue to protect the overall fiscal state of the city. And of course, there is a continued commitment to no tax increases in this budget. The next slide. Thank you. What you'll see in this slide and the next is that we have done purposeful underspend in our expense budgets year over year. As you look across all of these, you'll see how much we've underspent the budget each year, the expense budget, which has helped grow fund balances, which has allowed us to bring in front of you the last three years in a fiscal package, individual items we're able to present. This year, that will be the $40 million in additional infrastructure investments in both residential streets and thoroughfares that we were able to pull directly from fund balance due to the fact that we've protected those fund balances. On the next slide, you'll see our budgeted revenues. We've exceeded the budgeted revenues each year. We're very conservative in our estimates on purpose to make sure that we do not use more than what we are actually going to be able to, that we will actually receive. On the next slide, this council has passed two different policies: an unassigned fund balance policy and an unrestricted fund balance policy. This means that there is a 10% threshold of our expenditures that must be held via policy in reserve from an unassigned perspective, and 17% of expenditures unrestricted. As you'll see in the chart, we've exceeded that every year since the passage of that policy. This is incredibly critical as it relates to our credit rating, as we go through credit rating and review with credit rating agencies how the city's doing overall. This is one of our strengths that is pointed out year after year when we do those presentations. And on the next slide, a little more about our credit ratings and the improvements we've been able to make since 2016. You'll notice, most recently, Staters and Poor's are current rating an AA+ with a positive outlook. I stand before you to tell you that there are very few cities of our size who are in a positive outlook without relying on their American Rescue Plan funds for operational reasons. And the city of Indianapolis has taken that approach throughout. Federal funding has come in 2020, 2021, and 2022, and in each of those instances, we've made sure and protect our operational budget and to not put anything in place that would jeopardize our overall credit rating and our management of the fiscal house. On the next slide, you'll see the 2023 overall introduced budget. Again, a balanced budget. Our revenues exceed our expenditures by $89,450. The next slide, you'll see a breakdown of our projected revenue. We had great growth in both property tax and income tax in the 2023 budget, and continued growth in both over these last few years. On the next slide, we'll go into local taxes paid in Marion County. Again, you can see the growth over the years. Important to note, in '22 and prior, some of the income tax that you're seeing in there includes the supplemental income tax. I want to remind the council that we never budget our supplemental income tax in our budget. It is not budgeted for next year. We will likely get a supplemental income tax. We have estimates of what we believe that will be. We do not budget that in an operational budget. We take our certified taxes, and that's what we use from the state to actually build our budget off of, so that we make sure again and be conservative in our approach and protect the overall fund balances. On the next slide, you'll see our 2023 introduced appropriation by area. In the next, you'll see our county agency spread. Of course, as is typical, a heavy emphasis on criminal justice agencies within the county side of the House, the sheriff, and Superior Court making up the majority of this budget, as well as the prosecutor, public defender, Metropolitan Emergency Services Agency, community corrections and forensics, a number of obviously very large entities on the county side, as in all counties in Indiana, maintaining our criminal justice systems. The next slide is the breakdown by city department, with Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department making up the largest portion of the budget, along with Indianapolis Fire Department. That makes up over half of the city budget. Public Works comes in next at 22%, and then the other city departments are there as well. On the next slide, the public purpose grants that are already funded in this budget. You will review these during budget hearings within the agency or department that is listed. There are some increases. There is an increase in the Marion County Fair Board appropriation, and there is also an increase in the Arts Council by about $300,000 that will be discussed in the Parks Department budget. And then, each year, we get a number specifically focused on regional health and mental health centers. That number is generated by the state, and so that is also included here. To get into some of the specifics that are funded in the budget on the next slide, we'll go into public health and safety initiatives. I won't read all of these individually to you, but we are happy to have $5 million for the Crime Gun Task Force, funded through our partners at the state. We have $2 million to hire the city's first team of mental health professionals to respond when residents experience mental health crises. $250,000 in continued funding for the Tenant Legal Assistance Project and the Eviction Avoidance Project with Indiana Legal Services. And then, funding for 1,743 police officers and 1,220 firefighters is built into the budget. On the criminal justice initiatives, we have six suicide prevention advocate staff in the Marion County Sheriff's Office to work in the Adult Attention Center. That's an increase of two additional staff in that area. The first deployment of 105 body cameras within the Marion County Sheriff's Office is also funded in their budget. And you also have increased funding for additional staff supplies and pathology services for the Coroner's Office. This is the third budget in a row with an over 20% increase in the coroner's overall budget. We're proud to have worked with them to help build up that budget for the needs that they have. Infrastructure and neighborhood investments: $287.7 million for roads, bridges, greenway improvements across Indianapolis's neighborhoods for 2023. An additional $500,000 for Indy Achieves is also in the budget, as mentioned by the mayor earlier, to provide scholarships for Indianapolis residents. And $1.3 million in direct grants for more than 100 Indianapolis arts organizations, including increased funding as well. On the capital equipment side, we have $1.2 million for IMPD patrol vehicles, $2 million additional dollars for IFD apparatus to be able to finance some additional apparatus for the fire department and catch up on their apparatus replacement program. There's also $390,000 in additional funding for emergency preparedness gear for the Metropolitan Emergency Services Agency. This will only be the second year that the council's been able to hear the Metropolitan Emergency Services Agency's budget, but hopefully it gives you a focus on some of the work that they do. Here, you'll see the 2023 Transportation Capital Plan. This will be presented at Public Works Committee on Thursday by Director Parker and the DPW team in more detail. And then, the next slide shows the investments we're making in stormwater capital as well. Historic investments on both. These are the highest numbers we've ever been able to achieve, and we're really proud to have squeezed every dollar we could towards infrastructure in this budget, and I think you'll all be pleased to see it when you get to review it on Thursday. So, the overall package that we're presenting, just as a recap, the 2023 City-County Budget Proposal includes the operational budget, as you have typically reviewed, so you have that budget ordinance. The American Rescue Plan fiscal will be heard tomorrow at Admin and Finance. That's the second half of the funding received from the American Rescue Plan for the fiscal recovery funds. So, that allocation has been received in our bank account and is ready for appropriation, so we'll be bringing that to the council. The property tax relief proposal outlined by the mayor, the $27 million we're taking from the $100 million I held back from the American Rescue Plan, $27 million will be used for the property tax relief proposal. Circle City Forward roadway fiscal is also in there. That's the $40 million in fund balance we were able to generate to propose. That will be heard on Thursday at the Public Works Committee, and Director Parker will include that as a part of his capital improvement plan. And then, there's a general obligation bond, and this will be presented in a couple weeks at Admin and Finance. There are four pieces to this. We are replacing another one of the Indianapolis Fire Department's fire stations that's due for replacement, over a 50-year-old station that's due to be replaced. We're adding $1 million to catch up on deferred maintenance on other IFD fire stations that need to be improved. There is dollars allocated for MLK Park improvements that we've committed to make, and additional dollars for the City Market and the City Market Plaza that we will also invest in. That completes my presentation. I do want to thank my team. This has been, obviously, to get to this day is a very challenging time. Add to it, I think, five of us with COVID over the last few weeks. It has been a challenging time, I'll say, to say the least. Special thanks to Abby Hansen, our budget director. She works her tail out to get this done. As always, my door is wide open. My ear is open to any feedback you all have. I look forward to going through this, my 10th budget process with you all, and to do whatever I can to assure you that we've tried to address every need we can with the resources that we have in an appropriate way. Thank you all so much.
We thank you, Mr. Clark, and look forward to working closely with you in these coming months. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 290, which recognizes the life and legacy of former council president, Roselle Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution recognizing the life and legacy of former council president, Roselle Boyd.
Whereas, Roselle Boyd was born in a still segregated Indianapolis on April 24, 1934, to William Calvin Boyd Sr. and Ardelia Louise Lavelle Boyd. He attended George Washington Carver School, '87, Crispus Attucks High School, Indiana Central College, and received his bachelor's degree in history and political science from Butler University in 1957, and a master's in U.S. history from Indiana University Bloomington as a Lilly Fellow in 1965. Despite the political science degree, Mr. Boyd said he never saw himself as a politician early on, even though he later received the IUPUI Chancellor's Medalion in 2009 for breaking barriers in Indiana politics, which was bestowed on people of vision, character, high achievement, and distinguished voice. And whereas, Boyd spent the first 11 years of his career as a counselor and a teacher at Crispus Attucks High School, and recalls one of his proudest moments as the day his mother graduated from the Adult Education Program with her son as her counselor and instructor. Whereas, Boyd then accepted a position as Assistant Dean at Indiana University Bloomington, where he became the founder-director of the group's special services program, a program designed to help first-generation, low-income, or physically challenged students succeed and thrive in a higher education environment who would not normally be able to have the typical college experience. And?
Whereas, in 1965, Roselle was encouraged to run on the Democratic Party ticket for the then-county council, which was before the merger of the city-county government under Unigold. Becoming the first Afro-American member of the council, he patiently led his party as a minority leader until Democrats gained the majority in 2004, and elected him as the first African-American and first Democrat City-County Council President. Council Boyd ended his 42 years of service in 2007 as the longest-serving member of the council, as well as having the longest tenure of any Afro-American elected official in the city. And whereas...
Thank you. Whereas, as President, Council Boyd advocated the public academic initiative, which encouraged partnership between local universities and government. As a result, initiated the Early Intervention Planning Council to develop plans for providing early intervention services tailored towards helping at-risk or less delinquent children. And whereas, often referred to as the dean of the council because of his seniority, eloquent speech, calm civility, and dignified presence, Boyd was well-respected among his colleagues on both sides of the aisle. He would be remembered as a stabilizing force who brought about historic change, encouraged more people to become involved in the local governing process, and ensured that the rights of minority-interested groups were protected.
Whereas, Mr. Boyd cared deeply about racial unity and the rights of minorities. He attended Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech, and during his first few years on the council, he initiated the establishment of Martin Luther King's birthday as a legal holiday for the city of Indianapolis before it came an official national holiday, for which he was later awarded the First Annual Outstanding Achievement Award by the Indiana Christian Leadership Conference. He was also later involved in helping self-publish a one-hour documentary in 2008 featuring first-person accounts of Robert Kennedy's historic speech promoting peace in inner-city Indianapolis on April 4, 1968, following the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The documentary was titled "A Ripple of Hope: A True Story of Personal Courage and Responsibility." And?
Whereas, Dean Boyd was a true public servant, serving on many boards, commissions, and committees throughout his lifetime, including but not limited to the General Board and General Assembly of the National Council of Churches, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Alpha Phi, did I mess it up?
I did it right. Okay. Community Action Against Poverty, Indiana Health Careers, Mid-America Association of Educational Opportunity Program personnel, of which he was a past president, Indiana Interreligious Commission on Human Equality, Indiana Association of Cities and Towns, the NAACP, the Urban League, the Indiana Conference on Black Politics, National Council of Education Opportunity Associations, Academy in the Public Service, Central Indiana Council for the Social Studies, of which he was a past vice president, Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra, Greater Indianapolis Task Force on Intergovernmental Relations, Greater Indianapolis Progress Committee Board of Directors, Employment and Income Security Committee and Human Development Policy Committee of the National League of Cities, of which he was a past chairman and vice chairman. Finally, he was also on the Board of National League of Cities and the National League of Cities Advisory Council. And? And whereas, Councilor Boyd also served as group leader and director of Operations Crossroads Africa Program efforts in Botswana, Ethiopia, and Senegal, and received innumerable honors and awards for his contributions and dedication in the areas of education, public service, justice, and leadership, including several additions of Who's Who, Man of the Year, several times from various organizations, Educator of the Year in 1978, and Citizen of the Year in 1973. And whereas, Roselle Boyd passed quietly on from this life on Thursday, July 21, 2022, at the age of 88, and now therefore...
Being resolved by the City-County Council, Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the life and legacy of former City-County Councilor-President Roselle Boyd and acknowledges his historic breaking down of barriers in Indiana politics. Section 2, the council and the city of Indianapolis will forever be impacted by the contributions of such a well-respected, dignified leader and public servant. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too, which he has done. Section 4, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon... Section 4, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you so much, Mr. President and Counselors. At this time, Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to invite the pastor to accept this and maybe share a few words.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. To all of these colleagues, I believe the life and legacy of Rozelle Boyd deserves a round of applause. To this distinguished Assembly of Servant Leaders, let me say I accept this resolution on behalf of the entire Boyd family, and on behalf of the entire Witherspoon Presbyterian Church family. Dean Boyd, as he was affectionately known, was a member of Witherspoon for nearly six decades, and for nearly a half a century gave his life to this great city. Let me also say that I am honored to be joined by the sons and daughters of Witherspoon, who are in this room, Councilman Monroe Gray, and Lilia Bundles, Kathy Rittley, Thomas Rittley, who I dare say will celebrate his centennial birthday this December. Sons and daughters, also Attorney Lacy Johnson, who is a very fine member of our congregation, Claudia Polly, who I met tonight for the first time, who was the president of the Urban Legacy Lands Initiative, but whose grandparents were founders of Witherspoon in 19...
'07.
'07. And even the mother of our council chairman, Mrs. Osale, who for many years was a faithful and devout member of the Witherspoon family. I tell them often, we still claim you as a son. Just a few days ago, beloved, we gathered at Witherspoon to honor the life and legacy of Dr. Rozelle Boyd. The mayor, Councilman Gray, Councilman, Council Chair, rather, Osale, Councilwoman Lewis, and Councilwoman Arlino gathered as I shared words about this great Renaissance man. I used in my eulogy the analogy that he possessed what the Christian author Walter Brueggemann called "the prophetic imagination." And I said in the article that was published just a few days ago about this great Renaissance man that he was the same behind the scenes as he was as a member of our great congregation. Matter of fact, I would argue that his faith empowered him to be all that he was in the civic sector. While I am disappointed at tonight's proceedings related to the action of the Dehane property, what I will speak to is the role and the historic role of African-American churches in this city. I have not had the opportunity to meet Councilman Barth, but so many, I bear witness to this point, that black churches and houses of worship have always been the buttress, the fortress, in which our people have found refuge, affirmation, and inspiration. And so it is impossible to honor the life and legacy of Dean Boyd and detach his faith, his resilience, his empowerment from his house of worship. As I charged the congregation that day during his eulogy, I pray that we do more than call his name, that we embody the ethos, the faith, the resilience, and the servant leadership that he lived, the way he loved, the way he sacrificed, and the way he did not see the world as it is, but he labored to see the world as it ought to be. I say on behalf again of the entire Boyd family and the entire Witherspoon Presbyterian Church, our sons and our daughters, past and present, long live the life and the legacy of Dean Rozelle Boyd.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 291, which recognizes Professor Paul Mullins for his contributions to IUPY and to the advancement of the public's understanding of the role of the color line in shaping the history and contemporary landscape of Indianapolis.
If you are here for the Paul Mullins Resolution, can you please come forward? This is City-County Special Resolution Number 26, 2022. A special resolution recognizing Professor Paul Mullins for his contributions to IUPY and the advancement of the public's understanding of the role of color, of the color line in shaping the history and contemporary landscapes of Indianapolis. Whereas, during his 23 years as professor of anthropology at IUPY, Paul Mullins has been the leading chronicler of changing contours of IUPY's campus and its relationship with the near west side African-American community, emphasizing in his scholarships the rich history of those neighborhoods adjacent to our campus, including Indiana Avenue and Ransom Place. And whereas, Paul Mullins' work on the Indianapolis and the color line has been critically important to the IUPY campus as we work toward reconciliation with the African-American community and its descendants, who were displaced in order to make way for this campus construction in the 1960s. And whereas, beginning in the late 1990s, Paul Mullins organized archaeological excavations on campus in the adjacent Ransom Place neighborhood that involved students and community residences in a quest to uncover the material remains that would help reconstruct the stories of those once vibrant settlements, a history that might otherwise have been lost. And whereas, through the broad accessible dissemination of his work, Paul Mullins has served as the public face of IUPY for many current and former residents of our cities near West Side, and as for residents of other neighborhoods in our city. And whereas, in 2009, in commemoration of the 40th anniversary of the establishment of IUPY, Paul Mullins collaborated with local resident, the late Glenn S. White, to produce the book, "The Price of Progress," which captured the sentiments of the community elders who celebrated the history of their near west side neighborhood and reflected on how the community that was transformed by urban renewal. And whereas, in response to the work of Paul Mullins, which called attention to the displacement of the west side black community to make way for the construction of the campus in 2021, IUPY established the Through Their Eyes Memorial Scholarship, which honors the descendants of those ancestors who once called Ransom Place, Indiana Avenue, and our campus home. Whereas, Paul Mullins' research has uncovered the call to attention to other historical injustices in Indianapolis, including the 1922 lynching of a black man named George Tompkins in Riverside Park, a revelation that led to the establishment of the Indiana Remembrance Coalition, which worked to place a headstone on Tompkins' previously unmarked grave and prompted the coroner's office to correct the death certificate to list the cause of death as homicide rather than as a suicide. And whereas, Paul Mullins' work on Indianapolis's black suburbs shows how African-Americans struggles alongside other Hoosiers to secure the trappings of the good life during the post-war years, a period of almost unprecedented expansion in the middle class. Documenting the African-American vision of this story is essential for broadening our understanding of the multifaceted intersectionality between race, class, and upward mobility in our troubled histories. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the city of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council recognizes Paul Mullins for his multiple contributions to the work bringing about racial reconciliation in Indianapolis. Section 2, the city council extends its sincere gratitude and appreciation to the Paul Mullins for his research and for his public dissemination of that scholarship, which has led to the implementation of significant initiatives aimed at redressing injustices and inequalities brought about by the discriminatory power of the color line in our city. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here, too, which he has done. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. The motion carries, and back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. And with that, Sue Hyatt will now speak on behalf.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Adamson. Thank you, President Vop Osale. Thank you, members of the City-County Council. Thank you to the mayor for supporting this resolution. Thank you to the members of the IUPY community who are here tonight, and members of the neighborhoods that Dr. Mullins writes so beautifully about, who are also here to show their support. Unfortunately, Paul was unable to be with us this evening, but I'm very happy to introduce his son, Aiden Mullins Pearson. And it's great to have Aiden here with us tonight. And if you're looking at Aiden carefully to find signs of Paul in his face, even if he had his mask off, he looks exactly like his mother. But he has his father's wit and intelligence and sensitivity, so he's a great combination of both of his parents. So, I'm honored to make a few remarks here in honor of this resolution. Our great writer, James Baldwin, once wrote, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." Through his scholarship and through his commitment to the public dissemination of his work, Paul Mullins has helped us face difficult parts of our past as a city, and in so doing, he has helped us imagine new futures for Indianapolis and for our IUPY campus. For more than two decades, Dr. Mullins has worked on a range of archaeological and oral history projects in Indianapolis that have brought to light the history of the vibrant west side African-American residential community that once inhabited the space now occupied by our university and our medical center. It was largely due to Dr. Mullins' work in uncovering that history and reconnecting the campus with the displaced families and their descendants, that there are now historical markers on our campus commemorating the location of former structures once central to that community, and that the names of university buildings now honor notable families who were once community leaders. Restoring that history to our public consciousness has altered the perspectives of many administrators, faculty, and students, who now understand that there was someone here on our campus before we were, and that the vast stretches of parking lots and the undistinguished buildings that characterize our campus actually constitute a highly racialized landscape concealing a history of community displacement that needed to be revealed. In addition to his publications on the near west side, Dr. Mullins has also documented other dimensions of African-American and neighborhood life in Indianapolis. On his blog sites, Archaeology and Material Culture, and Invisible Indianapolis, and I encourage people to take a look at those posts if you haven't already, Dr. Mullins has provided thoroughly researched and well-documented posts on a range of topics, including the erasure of some of the city's oldest and most illustrious black churches, the enduring legacy of segregated waterways and swimming pools in Indianapolis, the impact of highway construction and urban renewal on neighborhood destruction, and the environmental consequences of industry on the west side, to name just a few topics. Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. Paul has shared with all of us many of the stories he has uncovered, such as the account of the racial violence that greeted black dentist Lucy and Meriwether when he moved into a house on the 2200 block of North Capitol in May 1920. The tragedy of black chiropractor George Chester Watkins, who, with his wife, was displaced from his home of 46 years on the 400 block of California Street by the expansion of IUPY, and who ultimately committed suicide in despair over the loss of his old community. And the poignant tale of Ira Johnson, one of the last holdouts who resisted selling his home to IUPY. Mr. Johnson's house, located on what was then Bright Street, was gradually surrounded by IUPY's vast sea of parking lots. His obituary in the Indianapolis Recorder, following his death in 1974, states that "In the 1960s, the elderly Johnson realized that," and this is a quote from his obituary, "there was no longer the need to hustle and bustle around, so he spent hours sitting on his porch at 311 Bright. This, too, had to come to an end. So many strange things began to happen. He didn't like what he heard and saw. His family understood that all the activity was necessary for the building of the new IUPY Law School. He did not. The house offered him security and comfort, so his last days were spent in his home, his last hours in his chair, and as he sat there, he entered into eternal sleep." End of quote. These and many other stories addressed by Paul Mullins have greatly enriched our understanding of not just the ways in which the color line and the policies that have enforced segregation have shaped the African-American experience in Indianapolis, but also of the ways in which members of the African-American community have actively contributed to producing the present-day contours of our city. Dr. Mullins has published on such luminous black figures as, among others, entrepreneur and philanthropist Madame C.J. Walker, musician Les Montgomery, world champion cyclist Major Taylor, and Dr. Clarence Augustus Lucas, the first African-American doctor trained in our city, who was a member of IU Medical School's first graduating class in 1908. Through this work, Paul Mullins has achieved something that many of us only aspire to. That is, he has used his scholarship in the service of helping to create social change, of advancing agendas aimed at redressing some of the deep festering wounds created by racism in our city. It is therefore fitting that he be honored tonight in this particular forum as an extraordinary member of our Indianapolis community, and as someone whose commitment to racial justice is always at the heart of the research projects he undertakes. His contributions have been integral to such recent endeavors as the creation of the newly-revived Madame Walker Legacy Center and the Urban Legacy Lands Initiative, formed an honor to promote and inform the community about black history in the city. Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. I am honored to be a part of this event at which we honor Paul Mullins for helping us to face our past, and in so doing, he has provided us with invaluable signposts for the road ahead, signposts that will help us forge a new trajectory as we strive to move toward greater racial justice for our city, our county, and our IUPY campus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Osale. Greetings to the distinguished members of the City Council and to Paul's son, Aiden. We all wish Paul and Marla could be with us this evening. We know they are watching, and we have faith that we will see you soon. It is a joy to speak about my friend, Professor Paul Mullins. I speak tonight as a native of Indianapolis, an IUPY visiting scholar, and as Madame C.J. Walker's biographer and great-great-granddaughter. Paul is a gifted scholar, whose research has created a framework for how we view, critique, and analyze our community. He is a generous human being who has made that research available in the most accessible manner to students, community activists, teachers, authors, and his colleagues in the academy. Younger scholars and reporters who write about Indianapolis rely upon his research, even when they don't realize it. I urge them to credit him for the legwork that he has done. He is a cataloguer of information, an archivist, who makes mundane documents and databases come alive as he tells the story of everyday people who lived in Indianapolis but whose contributions have been overlooked. Surely, he has left enough breadcrumbs for decades of dissertation topics for IUPY students to explore. He is a collaborator who writes late-night emails with details of the history and politics of our community. He is a friend who volunteers to read book manuscripts and who tweaks drafts of speeches. Paul is dogged and determined in his efforts to excavate the past, and I mean that literally. Where others saw asphalt behind the Madame Walker Legacy Center several years ago, Paul saw an archaeological dig. saw an archaeological dig. When others saw a blank slate and an insignificant parking lot, he saw the ancestors and insisted on revealing their stories. Paul is a visionary. Even when others don't immediately see where he is going, he keeps digging and examining and connecting the dots. Where some would sweep the truth under a rug, Paul understands that an accurate and multi-dimensional telling of our community's history makes us stronger. Paul has an irreverent sense of humor. He also has a deep affection for people whose voices are not heard. He is a champion of people whose stories have been omitted from the history books. Because of his respect for their lives, he has elevated us all and made us pay attention so that we, too, can respect their legacies and ensure that they are not forgotten as we plan the future of Indiana Avenue and the community beyond. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 307, which expresses support for
A proposal for a special resolution expressing support for the protection of reproductive rights. Whereas the United States Supreme Court, on June 24, 2022, issues its decision in Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization, expressly overturning the Supreme Court's 1973 Roe v. Wade decision, which determined that the privacy rights guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution protect the right to terminate a pregnancy, with some limitation in the Court's 1992 Planned Parenthood of Southeastern Pennsylvania versus Casey decision, which reaffirmed the central holding of Roe.
Whereas the Dobbs decision takes from millions of Americans a fundamental protected right to make their own reproductive health decisions, including whether and when to carry a pregnancy to term, and accordingly, the right to bodily integrity and self-determination. And whereas?
Whereas the effects of Dobbs will be experienced disproportionately by people of color, economically disadvantaged people, and all others who face discrimination in the healthcare system.
Whereas the Dobbs decision will enable states to force women and girls, regardless of age, who are victims of rape or incest, to carry pregnancies to term and to subject them to the medical and other risks.
Whereas the Indiana General Assembly has already enacted some of the strictest abortion laws in the country. And whereas?
Whereas with the passage of Senate Enrolled Act Number One, access to abortion has been severely restricted in the Hoosier State. And whereas?
Whereas denying reproductive freedom can negatively impact the education, career, financial, future, health, and safety of all who may become pregnant.
Whereas, in light of the foregoing, the City County Council seeks to express its support for the protection of reproductive rights and concern about the Dobbs decision and its expected effects.
Whereas the City County Council further intends to take such steps as may be appropriate to protect and advance the rights of women and girls in Indiana and uphold all persons' right to privacy, dignity, self-determination.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City County Council hereby acknowledges the determinations and findings contained in the recitals set forth above. Section 2, the City County Council hereby urges the administration to implement and adopt policies consistent with the principles set forth above. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature, which he has. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 363414. This special resolution was sponsored by councilors Brown, Adamson, Barth, Boots, Carlino, Ethan Evans, Jared Evans, Graves, Gray, Jackson, Jones, Larison, Lewis, Mascarri, McCormick, Oliver, Osalee, Potts, Ray, and Robinson. I so move.
Second.
Mr. President, because of the gravity of this bill, knowing that the majority of our county has been affected by having our reproductive rights stripped, I would ask that this be a roll call vote.
All right, granted. Madam Clerk, would you please prepare the board?
Should everyone go back?
Yes.
Can you push me?
Mr. President, I'm going to abstain from this. This is not city business. This is state business.
It's absolutely city business. We're supposed to protect the health and the welfare of the people of our county.
All right, very good. The motion carries 20 yeas, four nays, and one abstention. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, fellow councilors, who are brave enough to support women. Over the past month, I've been asked a lot to speak about my pregnancy, because my pregnancy, though it ended happily with my beautiful son, Dylan, which everyone on the council has gotten to meet, it almost didn't end that way. I was left in an emergency C-section, unmedicated, unsedated, hearing them talk about my son being blue and not breathing because I was bleeding out. I too coated on the table. My heart stopped. I stopped breathing. Found out I have something called placental abruption, which means if I get pregnant again, my placenta could pull off at any time from the wall of my uterus, and I would have six to eight minutes till I bled out and died. This is personal to me. This is my life that you all just voted on. I appreciate those who value the lives of people who give birth, people who don't want to give birth, and all those in between, because you know what? We need a voice, because no one is listening to us. So I appreciate you. Now, I've said a lot, but I want to turn it over to my friend, who has been leading the charge, Katie Blair, with the ACLU.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, and for all that stood up here earlier today. My name is Katie Blair. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Public Policy at the ACLU of Indiana. Last week, the Indiana General Assembly made the devastating decision to ban abortion in the Hoosier State, reducing over half of us to second-class citizens. They ignored the pleas from medical experts, business owners, faith leaders, domestic violence experts, and their own constituents. Lawmakers received thousands of emails, phone calls, and letters urging them to stand up against attacks on reproductive health. They ignored the thousands of Hoosiers that showed up to the State House throughout special session. By passing this resolution here today, the council is sending the powerful message that Indianapolis stands with the majority of Hoosiers who believe that reproductive healthcare, including access to abortion, should be safe and legal here in Indiana. The council is sending the message that Indianapolis stands up for the health of its residents, the safety of its residents, and the equality of all its residents. The ACLU of Indiana and our partners are grateful for the leadership that the council has taken on reproductive freedom, and I'm proud to be a resident of Indianapolis today. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 134, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on July 14, the committee heard proposal number 134, which wished to reappoint Ms. Laura Kaplan to the Internet and Greenway Development Committee. Mr. President, by a vote of 6 to 0, a do pass. I so move, Mr. President.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 200, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 200 appoints Anthony Bridgman to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 1. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 240, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 240 appoints Victoria Beatty to the City Market Corp. Board of Directors. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 170, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, let's take proposal 170 and 202 together, please. Thank you. Proposal 170, 2022, appoints Abdul Hakim Shabazz to the Marion County Public Defender Board. And proposal number 202, 2022, appoints Matthew Dotson to the Marion County Public Defender Board. Both proposals pass out of committee, 11 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Chairman Oliver. Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 205, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascarri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 205, appoints Holly Harrington to the Indianapolis Marion County Authority Board of Trustees, passed out of committee, 11 to 0. I so move.
Second.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 245, referred to Community Affairs Committee. Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 245, 2022, to reappoint Counselor John Barth to the Public Art for Neighborhood Selection Committee, passed out of committee with a do pass recommendation of 7 to 0. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 251, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 251 appoints Damon Richards to the Fatal Crash Review Team. Counselor McCormick moves, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal number 251 to the full council with a do pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 10 to 9 to 0. And I so move.
Aye.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to 0. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please bear with me. We do have quite a few introductions. Proposal number 266, introduced by Counselor Maury. Refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, appoints Chris Mitchum to the Equal Opportunity Advisory Board. Proposal number 267, introduced by Counselor Osalee, referred to the Community Affairs Committee, reappoints Amy Carroll to the Public Arts for Neighborhood Selection Committee. Proposal number 268, introduced by councilors Osalee and Lewis, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, appoints Vincent Ash to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Proposal number 269, introduced by Counselor Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, appoint Scott Carr to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Proposal numbers 270 through 285, referred to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 270, introduced by Counselor Barth, appoints Ted Grain to the Fatal Crash Review Team. Proposal number 271, introduced by Counselor Jackson, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the North German Church Woods, Bradford Trace, Justice Country Club Estates, and Brookwood subdivisions in District 14. Proposal number 272, introduced by Counselor Carlino, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Hunter's Green subdivision in District 6. Proposal number 273, introduced by Counselor Potts, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Countryside and Windcombe subdivisions in District 2. Proposal number 274, introduced by councilors Robinson and Barth, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Holiday Edition, Park North, and Sycamore Grove subdivisions in Districts 1 and 7. Proposal number 275, introduced by Counselor Boots, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Mendon Halls Pleasant Acres and Allisonville Estates subdivisions in District 3. Proposal number 276, introduced by Counselor Hart, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Arlington Acres, Arlington Acres North, Southern View, Hanover North, Churchman Manor, and Spring Lake subdivisions in District 18. Proposal number 277, introduced by Counselor Dill, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Brookfield Estates, Perry Manor, Effie Payne's Rolling Acres, Perry Woods Estates, Longacre, Martin Burton... Payne's Rolling Acres, Perry Woods Estates, Long Acre, Martin Burton's and Edwin E. Thompson subdivisions in District twenty-four. Proposal number two seventy-eight, introduced by Councilor Graves, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Arlington Woods, Success, and Arlington Place subdivisions in District thirteen. Proposal number two seventy-nine, introduced by Council McCormick, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Farley's Speedway, Home Place, and Anchorage subdivisions in District fifteen. Proposal number two eighty, introduced by Councilor Larison, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour on all local streets within the area bounded by Washington Street, Arlington Avenue, Brookville Road, and Emerson Avenue in District twelve. Proposal number two eighty-one, introduced by Councilor Larison, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour on all local streets within the area bounded by Tenth Street, Arlington Avenue, Washington Street, and Emerson Avenue in District twelve. Proposal number two eighty-two, introduced by Councilors Jackson and Ray, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Heather Hills subdivision in Districts fourteen and nineteen. Proposal number two eighty-three, introduced by Council Robinson, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Crooked Creek Heights, Crooked Creek Heights West, Hoover Crest, and Colony Woods subdivisions in District one. Proposal number two eighty-four, introduced by Councilor Adamson, authorizes residential parking permit at sixteen twenty-five Stern Avenue in District seventeen. Proposal number two eighty-five, introduced by Councilor Jones, establishes the interest in purchasing specified land owned by Omni Source Indianapolis LLC located between South Hope Road, West Minnesota Street, and St. Jones Expressway for the construction of a construction project by the Department of Public Works in District sixteen. Proposal numbers two eighty-six and two eighty-seven, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, and were introduced by Councilors Osely, Adamson, Lewis, and Robinson. Proposal number two eighty-six approves the tax levy and rate for the Police Special Service District for two thousand twenty-three. Proposal number two eighty-seven approves the tax levy and rate for the Fire Special Service District for two thousand twenty-three. Proposal number two eighty-eight, introduced by Councilors Osely, Adamson, and Lewis, referred to the Public Works Committee, approves the tax levy and rate for the Solid Waste Collection Special Service District for two thousand twenty-three. Proposal number two eighty-nine, introduced by Councilors Osely, Adamson, and Lewis, refer to the Administration and Finance, Education, Metropolitan and Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, and Public Works Committee, adopts the annual budget for the city of Indianapolis in Marion County for two thousand twenty-three. Proposal number three oh eight, introduced by Councilor Adamson, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, appoints Danielle Hines to the Marion County Animal Services Advisory Board. Proposal numbers three oh nine and three ten, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, and were introduced by Councilor Osely. Proposal number three oh nine approves an additional appropriation totaling two hundred six million, three hundred nine thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars in the two thousand twenty-two city non-departmental budget, I'm sorry, ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Subfund, and another totaling two million, I'm sorry, twenty million, fifty three thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars Rental Assistance Subfund to fund response efforts addressing the COVID-19 pandemic, including public health measures, programs to combat the secondary economic effects of the pandemic faced by Marion County residents, small businesses, and nonprofits, and to defray expenses incurred or that will be incurred by city-county government in response to the pandemic. Proposal number three ten approves an additional appropriation totaling twenty-seven million dollars in the two thousand twenty-two city non-departmental budget, ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Subfund of the Federal Stimulus Coronavirus Pandemic Fund for the purposes of providing property tax relief for homeowners. Proposal number three eleven, introduced by Councilor Adamson, referred to the Public Works, I'm sorry, the Public Works Committee, approves an additional appropriation totaling forty million dollars in the two thousand twenty-two budget of the Department of Public Works Capital Asset Lifecycle and Development Fund to finance, design, construction, and inspection costs related to residential streets and thoroughfare capital improvements. Proposal numbers three twelve and three thirteen, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee. Proposal number three twelve, introduced by Councilor Osely, approves a resolution of the Marion County Local Income Tax Council to request approval from the Department of Local Government Finance to lower the levy freeze rate and to cast the vote of the City-County Council on such resolution. Proposal number three thirteen, introduced by Council Mascari, authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds of the consolidated city and one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty-five million dollars to finance the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of, one, a new fire station, two, necessary repair and renovation of numerous Indianapolis Fire Department stations, three, city market improvements, and four, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Park improvements. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders priority business. Proposal numbers two ninety-two through three zero five, two thousand twenty-two are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no councilor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. Proposal number three zero six, two thousand twenty-two is a rezoning ordinance certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on July seventh, two thousand twenty-two. If no councilor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will stand as denied. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposal will stand as denied. The next item on our agenda is special orders public hearing. And before we open the floor to public comments, I would like to call on General Counsel Kim to review the ground rules for public testimony as adopted by this body. Ms. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we move on to public comments, we'd like to remind council members and the public of a few ground rules. So everyone can have a fair chance to speak and be heard, it is important that we each observe the following rules. First, each speaker will be limited to two minutes. Second, any public comments must reasonably relate to the agenda item under consideration. Third, speakers who stray from the item under consideration or become unduly repetitious may be asked to move on to their next point or conclude their comments. Finally, attendees who cause disruptions that prevent the council from proceeding through tonight's agenda in a reasonably efficient manner will be removed. Please remember that some types of threatening speech or incitement to violence are not protected by the First Amendment at all. We will deal with those issues if they come up, but we don't think they will. And now, Mr. President, if a council member asks for consent to adopt these rules, we can proceed to public comments at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two four two, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, President Osely. Proposal two forty-two approves an additional appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty-two budget of the Marion County Information Services Agency for Enhanced Access Fund to finance the cost of implementing closed captioning to all live and post-production programming for Channel sixteen. This passed out of committee twelve, zero. I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on proposal two forty-two? All right, seeing no one, let us then proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two forty-three, referred to Public Works, I'm sorry, Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal two four three, two thousand twenty-two, approves additional appropriations totaling three million, seven hundred, seven hundred and sixty-two, two hundred and sixty-three dollars in the two thousand twenty-two budgets of the Marion County Corner, Department of Metropolitan Development, Office of Public Health and Safety, Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department, Indianapolis Fire Department, the Seating County State Grant Funds to finance treatment, education, and prevention programs for substance use disorder or mental health issues from the opioid settlement to receive by the state of Indiana and distributed to local governments. Lord Rodriguez, Director of the Office of Public Health and Safety, reviewed a PowerPoint in detail, and Council Carlino moves, seconded by Council Boots, to send proposal two forty-three to the full council with a do pass recommendation, the motion carried by a vote of thirteen to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors?
Mr. President, Director Rodriguez is present to answer any questions regarding proposal two forty-three.
Very good. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Did Ms. Rodriguez want to make any comments herself?
I don't think she did. I had a few councilors who inquired about questions, and they're not here right now, so.
Very good. Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room with an interest in proposal number two forty-three? All right, very good. Seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero.
Mr. President, may I ask a quick question of Director Rodriguez pertaining to that vote?
All right, we've taken the vote, so there's no change in the vote.
Right, right, no.
But if you have a question.
Just wanted to get clarity on something. In the public testimony, we had asked about the township fire departments receiving some of the opioid kits. In conversations with both Wayne Township Fire Department and the Cary Township Fire Department, none of them knew of, didn't know anything about this.
All right, very good. Ms. Rodriguez, could you come forward, please?
Thank you, counselor. So we are working with IEMS to help with the distribution of that along with overdose lifeline, and we didn't want to promise anything to the fire departments if it hadn't passed yet. So our next step is now to tell them we have it for them, for them to access.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, the next item on our agenda is proposal number two forty-six, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, on July the fourteenth, the committee met to consider proposal number two forty-six, which approved an additional appropriation of one million, eighty thousand dollars in the two thousand twenty-two budget of the Department of Parks and Recreation General Fund to finance increased capital project costs. By a vote of six to zero, passed out of committee, Mr. President, I so recommend.
All right, the motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on proposal number two forty-six? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. There is no business under special orders unfinished business, and so we'll now proceed to special orders final adoption. And this next item on our agenda is proposal number two forty-one, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two forty-one amends Article seven of the code regarding payments in lieu of taxes by authorizing the Director of Development of Metropolitan Development to enter into a pilot agreement under IC six dash one dash one dash ten, sixteen point seven, and amends section two thirty-one dash seven zero three to remove thirty-year limitations on the term of a pilot agreement. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of thirteen to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Evans.
Thank you, President. I had a couple of questions, just clarification on this. I wanted to know, was there an issue that was brought up that, you know, promoted the removal of the thirty-year limit to bring this up in the first place? And also, would authorizing the director remove bringing the pilot projects in front of the council for approval in the future?
Very good. Chairman Lewis, would you want to answer, or who do we have here?
Mr. President, with your permission, there's someone here from the administration that can speak to this proposal.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Rusty Carr, Deputy Director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. And so, Counselor Evans, to address your question, so as we've been going through our affordable housing roundtable conversations with partners in the community in understanding priorities, long-term affordability has continued to come up, and that's what we're prioritizing. What this change does is actually allow us to extend affordability longer than thirty years, because some of the new financing tools that are available actually have longer terms to bond payments. So it's a little bit of a technical correction, but also allows us to finance affordable housing developments for longer. And to your second point, pilots can technically come down two paths. One is a Department of Metropolitan Development path that's authorized under code and under ordinance, and the other is through the council process. And so what this ordinance intends to do is make that more consistent in terms of the requirements between both of those, but if they chose to come through the council process that's laid out under state law, that would continue to this day.
So, just to clarify, you can already go down both paths currently?
Correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
Additional questions to Mr. Carr? Thank you, Mr. Carr. Additional questions from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two forty-four, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal two forty-four authorized the insurance of one or more series of City of Indianapolis, Indiana Economic Development Tax Increment Revenue Refunding Bonds in an amount not to exceed eighty-eight million dollars to refund the outstanding two thousand thirteen F and two thousand fourteen A TIF bonds. This passed out of committee twelve, zero. I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two forty-seven, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Proposal number two forty-seven met on July the fourteenth to establish that the physical body is interested in the purchase of real estate at one thousand seven oh one East Thirty Street, parcel number seven oh four, five nine five eight, owned by the Indiana Land Development Corporation for the purposes of the Parks Department. Mr. President, it passed out of committee, a vote of six to zero. I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from? Are there comments from, are there comments from counselors? Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say this is a win for the far east side and our ability to offer recreations and more parks for the expanding population on the far east side and in District fourteen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal number two forty-eight, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two forty-eight, which establishes the physical body is interested in the purchase of real estate at one oh seven, one zero, East Thirty Street, parcel number seven thousand, six oh one, owned by Henry Brickman, for the purpose of the Park Department, for the purpose of Park Department. The committee passed out of committee with a vote of six to zero. I so move, Mr. President.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal number two forty-nine, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two forty-nine establishes the physical body approves the lease of real estate owned by the city at nine seventy-five Bursel Parkway, parcel number one one zero, six nine eight six, to groundwork Indy in cooperation. Mr. President, it passed out of committee with six to zero. I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors?
Question.
Yes, Chairman Gray.
Nine seventy-five Bursel Parkway, is that the old fire station?
Correct. No, no, no. That, that property is, yes, it is, that's the old fire station.
Adjacent to Fall Creek? Yes?
Correct.
All right, additional questions, comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal number two fifty-two, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two fifty-two authorizes parking restrictions along the east side of Harding Street from alley two four seven five north to a point one hundred and eighty feet south in District eleven. Counsel Oliver moves, seconded by Counsel McCormick, to send proposal two fifty-two to the full council. It do pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of ten to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal number two fifty-three, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two fifty-three authorizes residential parking permit at fourteen forty Milburn Street in District eleven. Counsel Oliver moves, seconded by Counsel McCormick, to send proposal number two fifty-three to the full council that do pass recommendation, and that vote carried by a vote of ten to zero, and I so move.
All right, motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal number two fifty-four, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two fifty-four authorizes speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Bellmore subdivision in District twenty-five. Counsel McCormick moves, seconded by Counsel Maury, to send proposal number two fifty-four to the full council that do pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of eleven to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. There is no business under Special Service District councils, and there is no business under new business. So, the next item on our agenda is Announcements and Adjournment. The doctored agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counsel Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by all counselors in memory of former council president, Rose L. Boyd, by Counselor Carlino, in memory of Betty Bainbridge, by Counsel Osley, in memory of Hertha Taylor, Chulo Asika, and James Dixon, by Counselor Graves, in memory of Lars Tate. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City-County Council in recognition of and the respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask for the support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we adjourn. Thank you, counselors.